Alright, so it's six o'clock on Monday, August 13th, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order and the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment of silence. Any declaration of penance or general nature thereof? Scene one. We have our minutes from our previous meeting, which was July 23rd, 2018. Gonna move on to second draft of those. Counsel Hendricks and Counsel McKinnon. So any errors or omissions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Posed and carried. So our first item on our agenda is a presentation from counsel to Mariah Mitten. Well, I told Mariah I'd come to her, so I remember at the last meeting she wasn't too fond of speaking in front of people, so I had to come to her. So at the last meeting, we had a presentation from Mariah saying that she's going to be representing Canada representing Canada at the official show dance championships being held in the Czech Republic in September 2018. And counsel, I'd like to congratulate you on that and also give you a monetary donation as well towards that as well. So congratulations. And that's enough to you. Counsel, can you have your councilman along to say anything or congratulate her?
Yeah, I would like to congratulate her and I think it's quite an honor to represent Canada. And by the way, if you do well, I want you to go back before December 1st and give me a little presentation.
Only she does well, though, right?
Pardon?
We know she'll do well.
Regardless how she does.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And if you want, you can stick around. We have a full agenda if you want to see that. But if not, I completely understand. Okay, thank you so much. Can we just jump into the quarter revision?
Yes.
So our next item is our quarter revision. It's for the Cruthers Drain. So we need a motion to resolve that the quarter revision for the Cruthers Drain 2018 be opened. Counsel Sanders and Counsel Hendricks. All those in favor? Posed, not secured. Jennifer, have we received any written appeals of the assessment?
No, we have not.
And I don't think there's anyone in the gallery wishing to... There's a party to the drain. Does any member of counsel have any questions at all? Excellent. So that's, I'm assuming... Do we need this motion here, the receiving motion?
Yeah, just in case we have any verbal questions.
So just in case, we need a motion there to resolve that verbal and/or written appeals on the Cruthers Drain 2018 assessment at this quarter revision be received. Okay, Counsel Hendricks and Counsel Sanders. All those in favor? Posed and carried. And I assume that we will be confirming as presented, so resolve that the assessments for the Cruthers Drain 2018 be confirmed as presented in the engineer's report dated July 6th, 2018. And also that the quarter revision be closed.
So.
Okay, Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel Sanders? All those in favor? Posed and carried. So we're going to our correspondence. We're a little too early for our public meetings, which are starting at 6:15 and it's for several zoning bylaw amendments, which is 08, 09, 10, 11 of 2018. So for our correspondence... Well, we've gone through the quarter revision. We did the presentation to Mariah Mitten and we're just into correspondence. Do you have any conflicts of interest at all?
No.
Perfect. So our correspondence, which is the upcoming conferences, seminars and meetings. So we have our regular meetings that are upcoming, which is Tuesday, September 4th, Monday, September 17th and Tuesday, October 9th, as well as the annual Fire Department's Fish Fry being held on Saturday, August 25th, 2018. I assume our chief will have some tickets on hand. He'll have a list if anybody needs tickets. And then the first item for correspondence is from Roma and it's the 2019 conference being held on January 27th to the 29th, 2019 in Toronto, Ontario. And the next section, which is the recommended readings. Item number two is from the OGR and it's their board highlights from June 2018. Item number three is from Embridge and it's the 2018 Public Reharness Program. Item number four is from AMO and it's the cannabis update. And then for our action items, our first one there, item number five, is from the Optimus Club of Kerwood and it's the August, for August 25th, 2018, it's the Fish Fry event. And I believe we have a motion to deal with that. And then the motion there is to resolve that counsel acknowledge that the Optimus Club of Kerwood are applying for a special occasions permit to sell alcohol beverages during the Allie McCaff Fire Department Fish Fry on Saturday, August 25th, 2018 at the Kerwood ballpark. Counsel McKinnon and Deputy Mr. Stockman, all those in favor? Posed and not secured. Item number six is from Strathroy Care Dock and it's a zoning bylaw amendment 21, 2018 and it's the Banbury's Bear Creek. Should we have a motion just to say that we're not going to object to it?
I'll move.
And that's moved by Counsel Sanders and by Counsel McKinnon. Or McKinnon, yes? Okay, all those in favor? Posed and that's carried. And then item number seven is from the Township of Porwick and it's the Resolution for the Engagement Authority of Ontario.
Hard about it. I don't know. He doesn't retain the oxygen, really.
Deputy Mr. Stockman?
They're asking to borrow funds from cemetery fund. But at some point in time, it's got to be paid back anyway. So really, I didn't see any value to it.
Well, what I signed it was that they aren't allowed to borrow out that fund now. They want to be allowed to borrow out that fund.
Still got to be paid back.
No, I forgot that, no.
And I think it's just a protection for the fund that they can't borrow against themselves.
Everything auditors would hate to see happen, so I couldn't really support it.
I wasn't in support.
No.
Excellent. Okay, and then the next one there is from the City of Toronto. It's the immediate steps to address gun violence.
Not in favor.
Fine.
Fine, yeah.
Okay, so we need a motion then to resolve that counsel receive and file correspondence items CC 1 to CC 4 and then 7 and 8. Sorry, Deputy Mr. Stockman and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor? Posed and carried. Sorry, it takes me a bit to figure out which items they are. And we are still early on these public meetings, so we will move into our first staff report, which is our fire chiefs. And it's the establishing and regulating bylaw for the Allie McCaff Fire Department. And Chief Corliffe?
And so this is brought to the last meeting, so everybody's had a chance to read through it. So I'll take any questions or comments, I guess.
Deputy Mr. Stockman?
On what we're quote-unquote qualified or what you're allowed to do, on the last page of the, what is it? Confined space rescue? So I was thinking, yeah, confined space rescue, firearm and silo rescue, limited ability to... Wondering about our grain bins and that. Do we have that ability or...?
We do to a point. And this involves a lot. First, there's confined space, which a few of us have. Not confined space rescue, but confined space entry, so we can enter. When it comes to rescues, there's high angle rescue. So depending on the size of the bin, and most bins aren't that... Yeah, they're getting hired and held. So the ones that we've been trained on are the smaller ones, where what we can do is cut a hole in the side of it and basically empty it. And the other thing we can do there then is, you know, we can enter it and then come to the victim in there and stabilize them and do the best we can. And we do have some equipment. We have some safety harnesses. We have one of those, which is one of those boxes we had to put around victims. We have that. And we have done some training on it. Now, so that's why it's here as limited. And having said all this, we are going to do some more training on, hopefully, this quality of it. So... There are some fire departments out there absolutely won't do it at all and some will do it all. But there are even some in the county who took all the training, like all the high angle rescue, name it, and then found out that it was basically all for nothing because at the time the trainers weren't properly qualified. And so there's a lot going on and problems now when it comes to training. So we have to be very careful what we do. And so we put it down as limited to our training and equipment, which is minimal.
So I guess the follow-up would be if a person were to become entrapped in a grain bin, what can we do?
In a grain bin? We will enter and do what we can and start emptying it, one way or the other. And a few of us have taken some training since through P and H, but it was limited training as well. And the other thing that goes along with it, we need some more equipment, which isn't a real issue. But the biggest issue is the training, which is time consuming. And both the training and the equipment is only good for so many years. All the equipment needs to be inspected annually, whether it gets used or not. I just had our safety harnesses and land yards for the sewer site and for the fire department inspected last week. So anyway, we're up to date there. So my best answer is we'll do to what we're trained and equipped. And going forward, we're going to do more.
Any other questions, talking man?
No.
Any other questions at all from counsel?
No, mine would kind of belong the same line because we're such a rural township. We don't want firefighter ending up in the worse position than the victim, so...
And then we can draw from outside help too, but sometimes they have to come from far away. City of London used to allow their rescue teams to go up. They don't anymore. Now they have new chiefs, so maybe, I'll bet off of there. Strathroy Care Dock will come up with their platform truck and we've had them at P and H just to see how high they can reach and all that. So they can reach up to the high platform, if you're familiar with it. There's a platform out there and they can reach up there. So if somebody's, you know, medical problem out there or tangled up or something. So we've done that. So there are certain things we can do, so... But to put it in writing and as a bylaw, it has to be limited.
Counsel McKinnon, any questions or comments?
No, no.
See that our recommendation here is to resolve that staff be directed to send the establishing and regulating bylaw for the Allie McCaff Fire Department to the municipal solicitor and to the township insurance company for review as amended. Okay, does somebody want to move that? Counsel McKinnon and seconded by Counsel Hendricks. Any discussion at all? All those in favor? Posed and that's carried.
If I may add, I just want to thank our hard-far work she put into it.
Thanks for working with me on it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else at all from the fire department?
No, but if I may, and I don't want to sound like a complainer all the time, but we're having a big problem with people cutting the grass. They're just not doing it. When they do do it, they're wrecking things. Actually, this morning I took pictures. They've taken, they've broken two downspouts of eave traps. They've killed two trees just because they go around with weed ear and they took bark off. So we replaced one already because one of the trees was donated by the state of our God. So last year, the association paid for a new tree. It was $300. So, and they're just reckless and never gets cut one. Needs to be cut. Martha Smith cut it again on Saturday and he swept it all again, you know? So I don't know if something can be done or...
If you would report this to me, we can take appropriate action. But when we don't know at this level, we can't take any action. So reporting it to counsel, you need to report it to staff so we can take appropriate action.
Just want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on.
Okay. So any questions at all for the chief? If you'd like to do another plug for the Fish Fry, we have a few more people in the audience.
Yep, if you need to take us down into the fire hall or give me a call. You can't do either one of those. It'll be available at the doors, well.
Excellent. So that's August 25th, just so you're aware.
That's August 25th.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we are set for going to our public meetings. We have a motion to resolve the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendments, applications ZBA 08, 2018, 09, 2018, 10, 2018 and 11, 2018 be opened at 6:19 PM. Counsel Sanders and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor? Posed and that's carried. So before we fall upon three of the Dorkmans, so the purpose of the following public hearings for the Allie McCaff Council are to hear, are to give the members of counsel, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the applications before counsel this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record, available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of the decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to counsel, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township. An assignment sheet has been provided at your, for your convenience on the table where it is beside our planner, Aaron. So our first one, zoning bylaw amendment is ZBA 08, 2018. Rita Dorkmans, and I'm assuming, John, you can come forward too, because you're up next. And that's the one at 2754 Molinberry Drive.
The first planning application before counsel tonight is a report offering favorable consideration for a zoning bylaw amendment application submitted by Rita Dorkman. This is for the property known municipally as 2754 Molinberry Drive. The purpose and effect of ZBA 08-2018 is to implement a condition of consent, which was previously imposed by this committee of adjustment for consent B04-2018 on April 16th of this year. The committee conditionally severed a 0.49 hectare or 1.21 acre parcel of land in order to facilitate a disposal of surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicant is proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel created through consent B04 from general agricultural to surplus dwelling. This is to recognize the residential use of the lands as well as prohibit agricultural uses on these lands as well. In addition, the application is proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses on the remnant part and parcel. The application was circulated as per the Planning Act requirements. The conservation authority indicated no concerns to the zoning bylaw and no other concerns have been received at this time. Based on the above, planning staff support the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and have drafted a bylaw for counsel's consideration this evening. I would recommend that counsel proceed with the first, second and third reading of the implementing bylaw as the township is in receipt of the deposit reference plan.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Rita, do you have anything you'd like to add at all?
Oh, I don't think so.
Excellent. Anyone in the public gallery wishing to speak to the application? Send them on. Any members of counsel?
No.
No? Okay. And just so you understand, so what we've done is we're opening the public meeting. We're going to go through all four of the applications that's in front of counsel, then close the public meeting and then counsel will then hopefully approve the recommendations. So we'll move on to the next application, which is the ZBA 09, 2018, which is now the 28559 School Road.
So I do apologize, this is going to get fairly repetitive as we're forming the same thing. So the next application is for the same thing, a zoning bylaw amendment submitted by John and Rita Dorkman for the property known as 28559 School Road. The purpose and effect is to implement the condition of consent, which was imposed by the committee of adjustment for consent B05-2018 on April 16th of this year. The committee conditionally severed a 0.35 hectare or 0.87 acre parcel of land to facilitate the disposal of surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicants are proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel created through the consent from general agriculture to surplus dwelling. In addition, the application is proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses. The application was circulated. Conservation Authority did not have any concerns with the application and no other concerns have been received. Based on the above, planning staff support the proposed zoning amendment and have drafted a bylaw for your consideration this evening. I would recommend that you proceed with the first, second and third reading of the implementing bylaw as we are in receipt of a deposit reference plan.
Thank you. John or Rita, anything to add?
No.
I assume the same question for gallery? Any questions or comments at all from counsel? Scene one. Okay, thank you very much. And like I said, after the public meetings close, then counsel approve the recommendations, assuming that they will approve them.
One comment?
Yes.
If you want propane for the... I am getting rid of my propane. You don't need a friend?
Uh, no, I must want to stick around to hear the...
I just wanted to hear three more times.
Okay, next one is the ZBA 10, 2018, which is Leo, Katie Van Giffen at 2603 Egremont Drive. And I don't see them here, so... Hear the same spiel again, just a little different.
I do. I do apologize. But I do have to say them for each application. So the next application is for a zoning bylaw amendment submitted by Leo and Katie Van Giffen. This is for the property known municipally as 2603 Egremont Drive. The purpose and effect of ZBA 10-2018 is to implement a condition of consent, which was previously imposed by the committee of adjustment for consent B22-2017 on November 20th of last year. The committee conditionally severed a 0.57 hectare or 1.4 acre parcel of land to facilitate the disposal of a surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicants are proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel from general agriculture to surplus dwelling. This is to recognize residential uses of the land and prohibit agricultural uses on these lands as well. The application is also proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses on the remnant farm parcel. The application was circulated. Conservation Authority had no complaints or concerns. We haven't received any other concerns as well. We are, planning staff are in support of the proposed zoning amendment and have drafted a bylaw for your consideration. And I would recommend that the counsel proceed with the first and second reading of the implementing bylaw with the final reading to be given once the deposit reference plan has been submitted to the township.
Thank you. Anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to the application? Any comments or questions from counsel? So we will move on to the next one, which is ZBA 11, 2018. Merrick Farm Motors, 510 Inandale Drive. Al or Janice want to come forward or vote? Yes.
Thank you. Big surprise for everybody. So the final plan application before counsel tonight is a report offering favorable consideration for zoning bylaw amendment ZBA 11-2018, submitted by Alan Merrick for Merrick Farms Limited. The property is known municipally as 6510 Inandale Drive. The purpose and effect of this application is to implement a condition of consent, which was previously imposed by the committee of adjustment on October 16th, 2017, and that was consent B20-2017. The committee conditionally severed a 0.3 hectare or 0.74 acre parcel of land to facilitate the disposal of the surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicant is proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel from general agriculture to surplus dwelling to prohibit agricultural uses on these lands. In addition, the application is proposing to amend the zoning of the remnant farm parcel from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses. The application was circulated. There were no concerns from the conservation authority or anyone else. Based on the above, planning staff are recommending or do support the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and have drafted a bylaw. I would recommend that you proceed with the first, second and third reading of the implementing bylaw as we have received a deposit reference plan from the applicant.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, for Janice, do you have anything to add at all?
Sounds good.
Anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to this application? Any questions or comments from counsel? Okay, excellent.
I'd like to thank the counsel and Kathy for her guidance. A new process for these.
Okay, thank you. Ryan?
Yep.
So we've already gone through the ZBA 10, 2018 zoning bylaw amendment. Do you have anything you'd like to add at all? Ever, yeah?
No.
We're going to submit the results. I assume we got it.
We haven't received it yet, but we likely will get it as soon as it's registered, so...
Yeah, they're going to register it.
So I mean, Aaron explained that during her presentation, but that, the bylaw will just be the first and second reading of the bylaw and then the third reading will come after we receive that.
Correct.
So we have a motion now to resolve the public meeting to... Okay, so we have a motion now to resolve the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendment applications, ZBA oh eight, oh nine, ten, eleven of two thousand eighteen be closed at six thirty PM. Deputy Stockman and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. All right, so we'll deal with them in the same order. And the first one then is for ZBA oh eight two thousand eighteen, which is twenty seven fifty-four Mullaferry Drive. Have a mover and secinder for that?
I'll move.
Okay. That's standing and seconded by Council McKinnon. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. The next one is for ZBA oh nine two thousand eighteen, which is the twenty eight five five nine School Road. Mover and secinder for approval? Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks? All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Next one is for ZBA ten two thousand eighteen, twenty six oh three Egremont Drive. Mover and secinder? Council McKinnon and Council Sanders? All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. And the next one is ZBA eleven two thousand eighteen, the sixty five ten Innendale Drive. Mover and secinder? Council Sanders and Council McKinnon? All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. So, that clears up all our public meetings and time for Erin to head off, I guess.
Boring anymore.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll continue on with our staff reports, and our next one is from our public works manager, Jeff Hall.
Mr. Mayor, this first report is our monthly report just on activities that have been taking place in the road department. The first one that I'd like to announce is Walker's Drive has commenced. It's going to get pretty boring. I'm pretty sure I'm going to repeat that for the next couple of months. But it is up and running. We've started at Dunton Donald and we're putting in culverts. We're working in the middle block now this week with cross culverts and yeah, so that's started. Number two, the hay drain, including the Sexton Road and Melwood Drive upgrades are complete other than a little bit of, little bit of ditching around the new catch basins that have been installed on Sexton and Melwood. But basically, all the ditching has been done there. There's a little bit, I noticed this morning with a big rain, we have a little bit of water being held back in one spot, but a little bit of backhoe work and another thing we can find out there, so it's kind of nice to get that project off, onto the books. Number three, the road count program has started. Kyle, the summer student, has been out for now for almost two weeks. He started in South End down in Innendale, and he's working his way up. He'll go all the way up to the north. And we'll keep the program going. We will do mall ferry and pike in September when people are back at work, so we get a little better idea of traffic counts with buses and that sort of thing. But I don't think there's been any surprises so far. The counts, you'll be able to check the counts out once we're all done and they'll be available for people. Number four, good news, the case backhoe has arrived and is in use. We got it down on Walker's right now, working. Yeah, wonderful. It's a great machine. I wish it was here for you guys all to see it, but it just, we wanted to get it into service and get used to it, so it's up and going. And I must admit, I've, over the years, I've dealt with a lot of different equipment companies, and I must say, working with the Saras was really, really good. Dave was the representative, and I can't speak more highly of dealing with those. The last thing just on this report is school landfill. We did get the wells, or the well installed. We had the other wells, one well inspected that was supposedly leaking, so that that work has been completed. I've got a message into Sprites to look at one of the drains that runs across our property there to give us not a report, but a kind of a, more or less, an update on what will happen in the future with this drain. We have a farm drain that crosses the property, so obviously, we can't have a farm drain cross the property, so... That's coming up, but at the same time, I've got a quote from Maze's excavation, and they're going to start a new cell. They've already started the new cell up there. The landfill will be up and going in September, so if you're talking to anybody and anybody's concerned about it, it's on schedule to be back up and running like normal in September, so... And I think that's it to the, to the activity report. I resolve that, Mr. Mayor, that council accept the report as reported, so...
Okay, mover and secinder for that? Council Hendricks and Council Sanders? All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
Mr. Mayor, the second report is to do with the provincial driving rodeo that's coming up in September. I think everybody's aware that Coulter won it last year, which is a pretty good feat. He is invited back to defend his championship.
Exactly.
Which is good. And Richard Elliott finished in the top three for Middlesex County, so Coulter is invited to go back to defend his champion. And Richard being one of the top two from there has also been invited to represent Middlesex County at the driving, at the rodeo championship, so... This has taken place in September the twelfth in Owen Sound. The financial impact, although there's no cost of the championship itself or the activity itself, there'll be some meals that will have to be covered, so about three hundred and fifty dollars, I estimate, is the cost to send both representatives, so... My recommendation is that the council approve the spending for, or sending of Coulter, Cahill, and Richard Elliott to the provincial.
By Deputy Stockman, signed by Council McKinnon. All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
And I'd say both have questions.
Any questions at all for Jeff?
Just curious, with this dump here being closed, have you had an increase in the amount of roadside dump?
No, surprisingly, no. I was expecting it. I was expecting a, you know, a few people just, you know what? I'm just going to throw it out. The only, the only thing I had, which was a very interesting, I'll have to deal with it, but somebody changed out their light bulbs in a barn and brought all the light bulbs over, which isn't a big deal, except they're all the fluorescent hazard ones, so they actually can't go in the landfill, so I'll have to arrange to dispose of them properly.
So, where would they have to go?
We talked about it, the hazardous, Middlesex County runs a hazardous...
Number two.
Yeah, exactly.
Just the other side of Delaware.
Yeah, also, I mean, and it wasn't, and I'll be honest with you, they packaged them up like, almost like they were unaware that they were hazardous. It looked very clean and very neat, and they didn't, certainly didn't just throw them out in the ditch anywhere. They did a good job, but it's a pain, it's a pain. I said to Kathy, it's a pain. Now, we have to arrange to get rid of these, so...
Maybe that's the kind of information that should go into a newsletter or something. Because I think, like even now, I was talking to somebody and people don't know what to do with their spent batteries. Home hardware doesn't take them anymore, so...
A kind of a side note, we were at a training session, and the trainer talked about, the government supported these, like the pigtail bikes years ago, and a lot of businesses, a lot of corporations across Ontario put these into businesses, and now they're deemed a hazard in the workplace, and it's become a real pain for everybody involved, not just homeowners.
Deputy Stockman?
Let me know when you're going, because I'll give you four boxes of...
Well, as long as they go to the right spot.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. If you're going, or somebody's going, or somebody's coming to pick them up, let me know ahead of time, and I'll bring them to the same spot.
You did the same thing. Did you burn?
Well, this is over the years. I've, like, yeah, and actually, I did change the LEDs too, but just, I was always saving the ones that were broke, because I couldn't dispose of them anywhere, so I've got, yeah, I think, four boxes, because I buy them fifty sticks at a time. And there's more than fifty sticks in the box now, so...
And to go back, Mr. Mayor, other than that, actually, people have been pretty good. Other than a little bit of confusion right at the start of people, where they could go, they thought it's stratospheric. There's a place to go, but other than that, it actually was really good, actually.
Jennifer just mentioned that she is drafting a newsletter right now, so that could be something that can possibly go in there, so...
Good idea. I've got a question, Jeff, regarding that bit of some drain you're talking about, that landfill.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's actually, it's a farm drain, a private farm drain.
Oh, it's a private drain?
Yeah, no, it's a private drain that originally went through the property.
So, are we going to have to reroute that drain?
The thing is, we'll have to do something with it, because the landfill blocks the flow of natural flow of water. So, this drain actually takes the flow of water away right from the landfill, but the problem, it runs, it'll eventually run right underneath the landfill, so it can't have the landfill leaching into the farm.
That's what I mean.
So, something will have to be done, and we're hoping to get, that's where Sprites have been contacted, to give us some options at what we can do with this drain, so, for the future.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not affecting us right now, but as soon as our cells get a little further along, all of a sudden, we'll be...
No, it won't affect the cell you're doing.
Not right now, no. This is to get her ready for the future, to be aware of the future for her, so...
Okay, any other questions? All those mentioned that I did me compile, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
That's why I met him last week. Seems like a, yeah, great employee for Allen Macca for the summer. He, I seen quite a bit loading up all the culverts onto the new trailer and brings them out, comes back, loads up some more, and so, hard work and good, so... Okay, if there's nothing else, we will move on to the clerk's report. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This report was given to council at the last council meeting for July twenty-third, and so, if council's had a chance to read it, if you have any questions or amendments or concerns, I'm certainly take those into consideration while compiling this bylaw. I did receive comment from Deputy Mayor Stockman regarding the notice to... Temporary service disruption, how it doesn't really say how we will provide that type of notice. The only thing with that is if we have to go to that route of the extreme where we start listing the types of service disruptions we'll have, we'll have a multi-page document. So, what we have been doing, and it seems to be working out pretty well, for instance, we had issues with our phones, so that automatically went on to our website and automatically went on to Facebook. We had issues where our emails weren't working, so that went on to Facebook as well as website. We have road closures, that goes on to Facebook and that goes on to website, and we also notify, like, fire EMS police. If it was school time here, school buses would also get notified. If we have a, just trying to think of past service disruptions we've had since I've been here. If, for example, we had an issue with our automatic door opener for accessibility, then again, that would go on to our Facebook and our website page as well, as well as a note would be posted on the door to knock or honk or let us know you're out there so that we can help you get in. So, my recommendation is to leave that section as is, only because it would have to be quite detailed. We'd have to put in writing as to what the disruption is, and then put in writing as to what we're going to do to fix it, so then we'd be blinded for every disruption. So, currently, it seems to be working. I haven't gotten any negative feedback of not, people not knowing that these issues have taken place. One other one we had was when our office was closed due to the snowstorm. That did go on our Facebook and website as well, and didn't seem to have any negative comments from that as well. So, hopefully, going forward, that will stay as is, and, and I mean, if we do receive negative comments, it's certainly something that we can work with and work with the public to make sure that they're aware of service disruptions. I did receive other feedback, recommendations from the CIO treasurer, and what I'll do is I will quickly go through some of those changes. So, any place throughout the bylaw where CIO treasurer is indicated, it was recommended that the and/or the clerk be added. As if Kathy's not here, then it'll be my responsibility to do, and I, as clerk, also have recom, or... Times where I will have to post notice, so if it, to make sure, to make it clear, to put myself in there as well. And under sale of municipal land, we have a separate bylaw that pertains to that, so that whole section was taken out. And under fees, we have a separate bylaw that we have for a fee schedule bylaw, so that section has been taken out as well. I think that is about it as far as comments, questions, recommendations go. If anybody has anything else they need to add, please feel free to let me know. So, my recommendation from this report is to make the amendments as presented and to bring this bylaw back to council for the next council meeting for passing.
Any other comments? Okay, moved by Council McKinnon and seconded by Council Hendricks. Is there any other comments on the bylaw? All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. So, we'll see that on the, the next agenda then.
Correct. My next report is regarding lame duck, which is also known as a restricted act. So, under section two seventy-five subsection one of the municipal act, it lists how to determine if your council is in lame duck based on two periods. So, we are currently in the first period, so it's from nomination day, which was July twenty-seventh, and it will run until voting day, which is Monday, October twenty-second. And the second period will be after the determination after election results have come in, so that will be October twenty-third, when the list will come out as to... Until term of office, which is December first. So, for right at this moment in time, I'm pertaining to the first period, and based on our certified list of candidates, we are in a lame duck position. I did have a question from Deputy Mayor Stockman, and it's true, three quarters does have to come back, but there's a second determination on that, and it's because I cannot certainly say that seventy-five percent of the members of our council are going to come back at election time, then we're sitting in a lame duck. Basically, we have more candidates than we do have returning officers or returning council coming back. So, that's where my determination had come in. Does that help clarify? You're confused.
Back up and run that over me. No, I understand you now. I get it. If there's only one, and the three were coming back, then there would be seventy-five percent. In this case, we got so many that it could be, yeah, I understand you now.
So, right now, we're, we know for certain that we're going to have one new councillor.
Yeah.
So, because we have three new councillors and two returning councillors coming back, that's not seventy-five percent, and we have one returning councillor running for deputy mayor, one new candidate for deputy mayor, one returning, I won't say returning, one current mayor running for mayor, and one new candidate for... one returning, I won't say returning, one current mayor running for mayor, and one new candidate for mayor. So we don't have that seventy-five percent, based on, um, my calls note version for the municipal election and on the act from, uh, reading and digesting the terminology. So what happens now is, in my, um, report, to help council understand, nothing is really going to change, because we have an approved budget. And unless we find something or run into something that's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars, which at this point in time, I talked with Kathy, we don't see anything right now. Now we could run into issues with equipment if we get into an accident, and then, you know, we may have to bite the bullet and figure that out at that time, but right now, there's nothing scheduled where, um, our delegated officers, being Kathy and the mayor, would have to make any decisions outside of that. So we currently, our status quo, we follow the budget on a day-to-day basis as we always have, so that nothing of that nature is gonna change. Um, we, uh, council approved a bylaw number twelve of earlier this year to delegate powers for hiring and firing. So in the instance for the financial assistant position that we're looking at, uh, hiring, Kathy was delegated to look after that. Um, and if it becomes a position of Kathy's stature being CIO treasurer, then the mayor's been delegated that power. But I, I really don't see anything of that nature happening between now and then. It's only till October twenty-second, and then after the election, another determination comes in, based on who got voted in, if we're in lame duck again. Does that help?
It sounds like a, a fairly convoluted law, because I was under the assumption that if, based on previous discussion, that if four of the five people that are presently on were running again, that we were non-lame duck.
It all depends on the positions that council, current council runs for.
And how many people run.
Well, yes, and how many new candidates we have coming in.
But that wasn't made clear before. It was just.
It doesn't really matter.
No, it doesn't matter, but it's just the.
The point, the principle.
Yeah. Cause we're, we're five members now, regardless of what position we are, because we make decision as a five-member council. There's four members that are running again, regardless of how many other people are running, there's four members of the five running again, so that's eighty percent.
But out of those four members that are running, two of them are not guaranteed to get in. And I cannot certainly make that decision that the two that are running for counselor will get in October twenty-second.
Yeah, but there's no guarantee that the other two that are running for mayor and deputy mayor will get in, so
Correct. Correct.
Then in theory, it's zero.
Correct. And you will be in lame duck at that point again.
No, but I mean, now, if if you're ready, if if we're working to project what could happen on October twenty-third.
The certainty is zero.
The certainty is zero.
Exactly, so.
It is.
Uh, but. I won't win, I know that. At first, the, the discussion, the argument, I know that.
A car, okay.
Yes.
You're lucky when we move the meeting up in there.
So, yeah, it's just, Jennifer will make a note of that, for for your sign, that, that report, that will, it'll be a little more clear than with what that, how that presented works and everything else, yeah.
So basically, if there's an equivalent number of candidates for all positions, or no, so, sorry, if there is more, double the candidates for, if there's ten candidates or whatever, for five positions, we're lame duck.
Correct.
If there is seven candidates for five positions, we're lame duck.
Just to be clear, it all depends though, on those, what those candidates are running for.
What positions.
So if all ten are running for, say, the, the mayor deputy mayor position, and then there's three state counselors acclaimed, then.
The same position.
There would be.
Then.
Then we're still lame duck.
Yeah, so it all depends, yeah.
It's a very convoluted.
If I may, there is a clause that says with certainty, and that's what, um, Jennifer's basing it on, is that she has no certainty that three quarters of this current council will be returned, so that's what makes it lame duck, is there's not the assurance that three quarters, so it's when you get into acclamations that you may only have a mayor's race, and the rest of it is acclaimed, so you're with certainty that three quarters of your council will be returned. It's that with certainty clause that that determines what those.
There's two little ones. So, so that, that needs to be underlined next time.
Is there any other questions at all from the lame duck, uh, report, or?
No, we got it pretty well covered.
And who would like to move in second, but?
I will move.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
My last report, uh, is the license to use information agreement, uh, from Intelavote Systems. So on July thirteenth, I received an email from Vanessa, who's the senior e-voting consultant with Intelavote Systems. And in her email is explained, uh, that MPAC information being used by the township is provided to the township under an agreement to use information with MPAC. So that provides that if any other company, such as Intelavote, for this case with the two thousand eighteen, um, municipal election, requires the information for election purposes, so printing the voter letters as an example, the township will be required to enter into an agreement with Intelavote, uh, that requires Intelavote to manage and protect the information in the manner described in the agreement. Um, so because we are going with, um, Datafix, uh, which also has a, a program called Voter View, we need to have this agreement put in place so that Intelavote make sure that they are, use the same terms and conditions as we would be, um, blinded to through MPAC. So we're stuck with this agreement basically, because we're using Datafix, so, um, my recommendation is, um, that council approve the license to use information agreement with Intelavote Systems, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the license to use information agreement.
So I'm out.
Moved by Council McKinnon, and seconded by Council Hendricks. And Jen, the first is on your sheet here, it's, is it just yourself that has to sign, or the mayor as well?
For the agreement, yes, but for the bylaw later on, we'll see.
I understand, okay.
Okay.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, that's everything for me.
That is everything for me, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to our next staff report, which is our CIO treasurer, Gavin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, the first item is the accounts approval listing for the period July twentieth to August ninth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand twenty-four dollars and one cent.
Okay, is there any questions on the accounts at all? Council Hendricks.
Um, on page eleven, there's a couple of heating bills. Um, just, and it looks, well, one looks to be from January, and the other one looks to be from July, just wondering why you're heating this shop in Napier.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, so there was somehow a missed, um, invoice in January, and I talked to Kathy about it, I have no idea, because we paid invoices after, and why that single one was missed in January. I talked to, to the company and, and explained and talked to them, I said, we have no idea why, uh, invoices were paid before, and after that singular one, but, um, anyways, that's the reason for the January one came up now. And then in the July one, the, uh, Delta Carn switched out the propane cylinder, propane tanks.
Oh, okay.
And so they emptied what was in it, put it back in, and then topped the tank up to full. So, um, the, what I understand is we now have a full tank of propane at, um, Napier. Um, and that's the reason why they were there doing the work, so they topped the tank up, so.
Yeah, cause I thought it was a little warm this.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, now it's all I got.
Okay, Council McKinnon.
Page fourteen, zero zero sixty-four fifty eighty-three thirty-five, GHD Limited for the landfill ad. Who's GHD, Kathy?
GHD is our consultants.
Okay.
For, uh, they used to be Conestoga Rovers, uh, they switched names several years ago, so it's GHD Limited now.
Okay. Okay.
And that's for the well work that we've just recently have completed.
Okay, thank you.
What page is that on?
Uh, sixteen to twenty. Fourteen.
My page at the bottom, so.
Oh, okay, thank you, I was confused what we were, okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay, we have a whole, there's, yeah, Mary Ann used the red numbers, I think you were using the red numbers.
I was using the black, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Detective Stockman?
I'm using the black paper numbers.
Excellent.
Page eleven, uh, cocoa paving, there's, uh, two bills exactly the same, one day apart. Is that how much fits in the pickup?
That, that's how much fits the dump truck, but yes, yes, the, uh, we, we went in and got two loads of, uh, asphalt or, uh, coal mix, um, from cocoa paving.
Okay, and, and both exactly the same amount?
Both were, yeah, that's the.
Okay, I just thought it was coincidence?
They, uh, they try to, um, weigh them off at a certain point with the coal mix, it's not just whatever's on the truck, so for some reason they like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at all?
No, that's it.
Council Sanders?
Good.
Okay. And we need a motion in to resolve that council approves the account, uh, council listing for the period July twentieth to August ninth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand twenty-four dollars and one cent as presented. Anybody? Council Hendricks and Council Sanders, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Uh, the next report is in regards to the site plan application for twenty-eight six-ten Center Road, this is for the, uh, hotel property. Uh, as you will see, we've been working with, um, the proponent's consultant, Dave Hammond, from Zelenka Priano for the last year, um, working on getting this project off the ground, we are getting very close to having site plan approval. So this report is twofold, one, to bring forward the master site plan, so council is aware of what's being proposed for the site, as well as to get direction from council on what we should be looking at for the security for the drive set, draft site plan control and development agreement. Uh, you will see from the plan that there is, uh, hotel being proposed, as well as, uh, quick service restaurant, a future restaurant and a gas bar. They're also proposing to do some reparations to the Tim Hortons drive-through area to fix it up. It's in some bad shape, it needs some work. Um, there's also noted, it says future traffic signals on Center Road. The county has determined that those are necessary at this point in time, and the county and, uh, the proponent developer are looking at getting those installed now, so they're working on that together. So.
One more light to go.
One more light, yes. So, um, the, the point of this is trying to determine what should we be charging for a security deposit. There's no, uh, standard for the township, the last, uh, last year had been based on the cost of, of the actual work being proposed, and as well, we're, we're recommending that this one be based on the same similar format, and whether council is looking for a cash deposit, or if a security, uh, letter of credit is good as well. Um, the proposed, uh, in-ground services, the internal works and facilities, which is everything inside the property line on their own property, totals one point one-two million, that includes the roadwork, sanitary, storm sewers, and water mains, as well as the landscaping. So the recommendation is to request a fifty percent letter of credit from the company as the security deposit as part of the agreement.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent, which would be six hundred thousand dollars. Close to six, a letter of credit, yeah, so they wouldn't have to have the cash outlay, which would, um, hopefully, uh,
Yeah, right.
spur them on to do more development all at once. Uh, I think they're proposing right now to do the gas bar, the Tim Hortons improvements, and the quick serve restaurant, and the hotel to follow, so we want to, um, not mitigate their cash flow restrictions by making sure we work with them as best we can, to keep the progress moving forward.
No, no, I, no, no, we ought to try to.
We did some investigation, um, Planner Bash went through and did some investigating on what other places turned, and it's all over the page with how different municipalities determine. Uh, the city of London was the one that we went to, and it has a formula that's very similar to the one that we're proposing. And I think that in the, um, development this side, that would not be unreasonable to request. Uh, the downfall to having a cash requirement would be to implement a plan as to when we would refund the cash and getting the cash back to them, so this way it's a letter of credit, irrevocable, we'll keep it on file, and then once it's complete, we will, we try to.
Yep, that's good.
Detective Stockman?
Yeah, you, you certainly don't want to be left out, hung out to dry, but you certainly don't want to put such restrictions on the development that they're going to say sorry. Uh, and we have to have a certain amount of faith in the people we're dealing with too, and, and show that, so.
Yep, no idea, totally agree. It's good, no, you don't want to discourage them, let them come, gotta try to help them along.
And we are looking to have the, um, draft site plan agreement and everything on our first meeting in September for council approvals, so they can get started this construction season, so.
Good.
Before we go to the motion, I just had just one question, which is, the property, I already had a site plan before, did we ever actually get a security deposit when we signed?
Yes, we did.
And did we, uh?
It is still sitting in our bank account. It has never been requested from the former owners, and there are a lot of works to be done there that was not completed, so it is sitting there in limbo right now, they've never requested it back, so.
Okay.
We'll have to deal with that at some point in time.
Okay, that's good, yeah. Okay, okay, so no motion then, to resolve that council accepts the security requirements that provided for the draft site plan control and development agreement for the proposed development at twenty-eight six-ten Center Road. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Yeah.
And you have a mind to set that you.
Oh, we have another one. And another one is to resolve that council approved in principle the proposed development at twenty-eight six-ten Center Road is presented on MSP one hundred dated June twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Okay, Detective Stockman and Council McKinnon. And any discussion on that at all? Nope, okay, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Before I just move on to the next one, I just want to say that this, I, I like this site plan compared to when we previously had it, I think there's been a kind of a lot of discussion and, and thought put into it in comparison to when we, when council received it before. It was, uh, a little confusing, because it was based off of a property they didn't acquire yet, and they never did. And in hindsight, I think the council would have realized that they did not purchase that property, that probably that site plan wouldn't have been approved, cause it didn't make any sense, whereas this, the flow of traffic and, and everything else, it does, it, it looks like a good site plan.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm assuming that the county's going to wait to finish all the work on Center Road till this is finished out, or?
I'm not sure, I will ask Chris tomorrow at the council.
As far as I'm aware, all of the county entrance requirements for this site development have been approved and, and, uh, are completed, except for the lights that they require, yeah.
Mm-hmm, well, they've got the road widening, I think, pretty well done, but it looks like it needs a top coat and a paint job yet, so.
Oh, they went through a pain with it the other day. So that told me more than I needed to know.
I missed that.
Yep, I saw him coming out of town and, uh, I put the white lines on.
Okay, Kathy?
Uh, my next report is in regards to our cross crossing and proximity agreement, uh, being proposed by Sunfor Adley-Win Limited Partnership. This is their response to the cutting dive cross crossing, which is to be bored for the road both in during two thousand and seventeen. As council will remember, we did part of the contract and ca, and stopped that contract. We have re-tendered it based on their requirements at the time. Now they're coming back and requesting that we enter into a partnership, or, or into an agreement with them for being able to cross their property. It's our property, it's our road allowance, and, um, we just have concerns that they're, uh, re, they're calling it an easement in the act. in the actual agreement, and they don't have an easement with us, we've never granted them an easement, they have used our right-of-way as a utility in the same similar fashion as hydro one, natural gas, any of those, so, uh, we're just looking to get council's approval, to get a, uh, legal review of that agreement and an opinion that this is not a required agreement, so we can move forward with these drain crossings as they're required, so that each time it comes up, number one, we'll be aware of what our rights and our obligations are, but number two, we can say to them that that is not required, and that the drain work will proceed, because our, our ratepayers need that to happen, because we've spent, invested a, a lot of money bringing the drain to a certain point, now we have to get the outlet, and that involves the crossing, so.
It's ridiculous.
We have followed their rules, they've set the first set of rules in the first, uh, tender that went out, they didn't like those when they came back, they have requested certain other obligations be carried out, and we did that as well in the second tender, and now they're stopping us again from proceeding.
So my first question is, if I may, when we made an agreement with any one of them, whether next Saturday, they had to be so far below every minute of the drain, three feet, two meters, a meter, I forget what it was, so what's the issue, we know how deep that wire is, turn the juice off, let the guy bore across the road, what is the big problem here?
I had an opportunity to talk.
I don't understand this, but, you know, okay, we're gonna get legal a- advice on this, who's paying for our legal advice, they are, or we are?
We would be.
Why?
It's our legal opinion, so we would be receiving the advice, the thing is, is just to end this and so that we go with the next drain, we can say, we are doing this, and.
That should never happen regardless, it's crazy.
I had a chance to talk to the Suncor Site Supervisor Jason Joseph Stark today, he was in the office on another matter, which will come up at the next meeting, but I did ask him what this is, what the confusion is all about, and why we're being held up, that, you know, we've gone through this, we met on site, we've had a next site meeting, like, why is this being held up, and he's, he is saying it's upper management that's requesting this, and their legal is requesting that this be done. Um, that's where I'd like to say, we have a legal opinion, it's our right-of-way, and we're going to put the drain in to s- to help our, yes.
That drainage line, that's ridiculous.
Our ratepayers need the drainage, and the drains were there first, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Nick.
Deputy Stockman?
Okay, uh, I emailed this to Kathy and asked me, Jim, how many other municipal drains on road property cross Suncor's existing line?
That's hard to tell, because we'd have to pull out the maps and see where the maps went, but it will be considerable, there'll be a lot that have that situation, so that's where we don't want to be going back every time.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it'd be quite a few of them.
No, but, 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 we have no agreement when they put that line in
Yeah.
over those municipal drains. And, so there are, there's, there's a process with the Drain Eject, we went through that whole process. They chose not to make comments, or the comments they made, we fulfilled. I would say, they've had their opportunity to speak, we're done the process, forever hold your peace now.
So you'd say, okay, we're gonna drill across the road regardless?
That's what I would say.
I don't know. To me, it's, it, it should be, that's the way it should be, because it should be all in black and white, but.
Yeah.
Council McKinnon?
Yeah, I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Nick, uh, that we've gone through the process and through the Drain Eject, and that was when they should have been, but I think Kathy needs the assurance that whatever she puts before council, we're not gonna end up in a court over it, that the Drain Eject gives us that right.
Council Sanders?
What's that gonna cost us?
I.
Any idea?
Any idea, I would assume, uh, based on, if we go to Middlesex County Bearers and Solicitors, it'll be less than four or five hundred dollars. They're very reasonable, they're hourly rates vary.
That's the word. Well, that's the word, yep, that's the word.
I think we have to.
Absolutely. And then it's gotta be something that is effective on every drain that's coming up regardless, not just this drain.
No, it'll be for every drain, yes.
Exactly, well, if it's five hundred dollars, even a thousand dollars, I'm in favor.
Okay, moved by Council Sanders, and seconded by Council Hendricks. Any further discussion, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Wish I could read along there once.
So it seems that drain will not be able to stand still until we get a.
Stand still until we get an opinion.
Yes.
Unless they change their mind and revoke the requirement to sign the agreement, and then we will proceed, as per their requirements to have it, uh, followed with the hydro vac, the specialized hydro vac, the live feed, and, yeah.
So that drain at this point is not working at either one end, the bottom end or the top end?
Right. It's, it's at the bottom end that this is coming, I believe, no, it's at the top end, top end, no, it's at the top end.
Okay, it's at the bottom end.
The top end has to come across.
Yes.
And how, how many, how many, how, how many people does it involve, is it a fair big drain, or?
I think it's, it's the same farm.
But it doesn't really.
Yeah, it's not very many people, but the point is, is that we shouldn't be required to, to go into that agreement every time we want, we need to do drainage work, and we're not gonna be held up by, by this.
Two to three.
No, it's, it's not a number. So whoever's gonna do this, we please tell them to kinda hustle along, so this, you know, but that, that isn't right, that's gotta be done, that's gotta be done actually, it's all, it should be.
Well, yeah, he put in wheat so that he could get it done.
No, no, that's right, exactly. So, crazy.
Uh, item number four, the report number four is the quote eighteen, two thousand and eighteen tree removal and stump removal, as you will see, we re- had, we re-quoted the documents on Friday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and the quotes close on Wednesday, August eighth at four P M. Uh, the quotes were reviewed Thursday, August ninth by Public Works Manager and C O Treasurer. The specifics, I attached what the, um, information was on the number of trees, so you have that idea, there's also the maps on the whiteboard over there, if you're interested on seeing where the trees are located, uh, you can have a look at that, uh, I didn't recopy it for everyone, but it's just there for your general information to see where the trees are going to be cut this year, so we had two quotes returned, one from Davy Tree Expert Company of Canada in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars plus H S T, and from Wyoming Tree Service Limited in the amount of seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars plus H S T, and, uh, the recommendation is set the quote from Davy Tree Company, Davy Tree Expert Company of Canada in the amount of fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars plus H S T.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, move on to Secretary for the recommendation of Davy Tree, Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Isn't that what we have now?
They, they are one of our local ones that we can go to, so, yes.
Report number five is in regard to the land acquisition from closed session April sixteenth to twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, it's just recapping that we had made an offer to purchase a piece of land that was being sold by auction, and that we were not the successful bidders, the report is being prepared for council for information and transparency purposes.
And, uh, move on to Secretary to resolve that council accepts the land acquisition report as presented by the C O Treasurer for information and transparency purposes. Council McKinnon and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Uh, and last, uh, the report number six is in regards to the municipal signage, the mayor for mayors program, I left on your desk this evening, and a little more information on the, uh, mayor for mayors, what we're looking at as staff for going forward with the program, uh, we're looking to establish some priorities to get some signage implemented, with the priorities being the township properties to be identified with the new logo through signage, uh, then we'll look at the entrance signs to the township along the county roads, which are priority based on the type of county road, whether it be collective or arterial, and if a welcome sign is already in place, and then we will replace the existing signs first, and then go with new signs after that. Uh, entrances to the built-up areas would be third on the list, uh, some sort of identification for the Center Road business corridor, and then different township sites and bridges, um, township road sites, uh, some of the bridges, Pike Road Bridge might be nice to have something there, that kind of thing. Uh, the sign design is something that, uh, the county of Middlesex had designed a tourism sign strategy in two thousand and thirteen, some of the lower tier municipalities have adopted this strategy, while others have created their own design, have attached the county signs to, designs, uh, we're looking for your feedback on whether you like those, um, you like that design, if you want to keep with the county design, or if we'd like to, to develop our own. Um, staff has been gathering photos of municipal gateway signs from the surrounding municipalities for your consideration. Uh, we do contact the county roads, and we will have to collect for the permits to have them installed on the county roads, and if there are no concerns from the county, we will be able, our staff will be able to install them at the county, we don't have to wait for the county to install the signs. I do believe that the county program, if we adopt the county gateway sign program with the, um, the blue and the green, they will provide those signs at no charge. But we have to confirm that with the county still, if we would like something different and outside of that, then we have to design it and pay for it our, ourselves. We do also have to get proper service locates prior to any installations. Uh, Public Works Manager Jeff Little has spoken to one of our current suppliers, uh, the recommendation is to go to a non wooden sign for longevity purposes, and depending on the final design, a sign will be approximately five hundred dollars for a four foot by eight foot sign, the posts, um, and other repertunities, as well as the labor, are all additional costs to be considered, and the cost for the township signs for their buildings will need to be obtained, depending on the size and what we want to see on those buildings, so what we are looking for is some direction from council in regards to the gateway signs, if you want to go with the county ones and just continue off that program, or if you'd like staff to work on designing something that's a little bit more, uh, Adelaide Metcalf style as opposed to county style.
I like the county style, and they're really quite readable at night. For the cost of them, I think they're nice.
Council Hendricks?
Um, I, I do like the signs, my, my thought is, though, we just had the logo developed, and we'd kinda like to see our own logo aside from just the words, if we could stick our logo on that sign too, but I imagine the county has issues with that.
Council McKinnon?
They may not, because, um, Melbourne is split in two by Strathroy, Keradock, and, and Southwest Middlesex, and they have on the back being the community of the county and Strathroy, Keradock, and on the other side, you go over and you look at the southwest side, and it says, the community of the county of Middlesex, so they may not have a problem with inserting our new logo, we could ask them.
That would be nice, to have it on there.
Okay. Deputy Stockman, any comments, no?
And did you say, excuse me, just sorry, so, this, the, 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 if we follow this, it's no cost?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Worth a sign.
So if we get our logo all set on there, am I correct?
I would, I would assume if it's exactly the, as the county proposes with no changes, it's likely no charge. We have to confirm that with the county, that that program's still in place, they originally were like that, if we wanted to add our logo or anything altered from there, there's likely charges for the sign creation, because it's outside of what they've got their standard.
So can we find out what the extra cost would be? But that wouldn't be the first thing we'd.
Okay, so just to be clear, so the, the welcome sign, so the, so this one in the middle here that says North Middlesex,
Yes.
if those are on county roads, this is my understanding from a few years ago, what Chris Trainee was saying, so if they're like that, that says Adelaide Metcalf, they're on a county road, they'd be put up for, at the cost of county. If it's, was, uh, welcome to, say, Adelaide, or welcome to Kaiser, all, all those blue signs you see on county roads, those would also be replaced and upgraded with this new version through county funds. Um, but I would agree with Council Hendricks that we went through the process of getting our logo, and make, we need to make sure it went on there, or we should have done this two years ago. Yeah, the reason we waited was to make sure we had the up, you know, the updated logo, so I think we're most likely best to, if the county is able to have the logo on there, um, at, say, this, you know, the, the cost, the, you know, the cost of the county, or.
No, well, I don't know, that's not a problem, isn't it, it's crazy, I mean, you're getting a sign for nothing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We don't mind putting a little bit action into it.
Exactly.
Nick?
Uh, if you read that top white section under the, the, you know, in the top part of that, it says messaging and graphics within this space are at discretion of individual municipalities, councils, and communities. However, it is recommended that these signs retain the white text on blue background, aesthetic show and blow. So, we can put more in that top section, right?
Yeah.
No, I think that's the way I would go, if we get our, our, you know, and see what the extra cost is, and then we'll move from there.
And then, given the day, we also have to remember that we do have thirty thousand dollars, it was a donation, so we have to make sure that, you know, it looks right, and it's, it's the right thing to do, to make sure that, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's gotta be it, yep.
Yeah, because I think Adelaide Metcalf is a longer name than North Middlesex, if you try and stick a logo in there, it becomes a lot smaller.
Yeah.
And even if we wanna put, let's say, one, uh, where's, where's, you know, the beginning of Adelaide over on the other end, or?
On Eagan, right.
On Eagan, if you wanna put one of our own, and sp- because you, you're saying we got thirty thousand dollars in donation, maybe we could put two or three up, and you know, besides these, that we wanna do on our own, I, I'm just suggesting. Like, you look at Watts for the middle of the area, well, it looks like a tombstone, I don't really like it, but it'd put a lot of money into that.
Yeah.
Kamoka's got a nice one, you know, with the.
Yeah, I know, but you're looking at a lot of dollars than I think, I don't know.
All depends, and that's what, that's what we're looking into.
That's what the recommendation has, uh, come up with.
Yes.
It just wasn't gonna, there was no point investigating anything if these signs weren't going to be something that council liked, so
Yeah.
if we were gonna spend time going to that exercise, if they weren't gonna be something, there's no point in getting on the county to find out what the costs are, and then find out we didn't like them, and wanted to go somewhere else, so, just to get a general idea of what council wants to see. So we will get with the county program in regards to the signs.
Okay, so the recommendation there, can you run a second there for that? Deputy Stockman and Council Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Anything else, Kathy?
No.
Okay. Okay, so that's everything for staff reports, you want to do the closed session before we do the bylaws, or?
Uh, we can do the bylaws, and then we'll get into closed session, because then I can stop the video.
Okay, so we'll go through everything, okay, is there anything for other business at all? So move into bylaws, so the first one is resolve that the third and final reading be given to bylaw number forty-two thousand and eighteen, for the drain, two thousand and eighteen, and the bylaw will be signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal be attached. Council Hendricks and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. And the next one is resolve that the first and second reading be given to bylaw number forty-five, two thousand and eighteen, zoning bylaw amendment for Leo and Kitty Van Gippen, and that the bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried, and the next ones are resolve that all three readings be given to bylaw number forty-two thousand and eighteen, the impact agreement with Intelavote, forty-three, two thousand and eighteen, which is zoning bylaw amendment for Rita Dortmund's, forty-four, two thousand and eighteen, zoning bylaw amendment, John and Rita Dortmund's, forty-six, two thousand and eighteen, zoning bylaw amendment for Merrick Farm Limited, uh, bylaw number forty-seven, two thousand and eighteen, confirm council proceedings, and the bylaws be signed with the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal be attached. Council McKinnon and Council Sanders? All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, if there's nothing else for the closed session, you have a motion to resolve that council, the C O Treasurer and clerk move into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine to be personnel matters and identi- identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, and de-laborations or employee negotiations at seven thirty P M. Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, so we ended our closed session at seven forty-five, and we just have, uh, the one item for the Rising Report, and it's to have staff procedures directed. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Opposed, and that's carried. And if there's nothing else, we'll have a motion to adjourn at, we'll say, seven forty-six. Counsel Sanders?
Yes.
And is everybody?
Fifteen minutes.
Deputy Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.
I can't believe it, I shut down, my God.
Okay, so we ended our close session at seven forty-five and we just have, uh, the one item for the Rising Report and it's to have staff procedures directed. Counsel Hendricks and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. And if there's nothing else, we'll have a motion to adjourn at, we'll say, seven forty-six. Counsel Sanders?
Yes.
And is everybody?
Fifteen minutes.
Deputy Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and carried.